Welcome to the Delta County League of Women Voters Candidate Forum. I'm Janine Reed from the League of Women Voters of the Uncle Margaret Valley, and I will be the moderator for this program. If you can't hear us, please just raise your hand. Other league members that are helping this morning are Kathy Lauer, Annette Chozick, and Patrice Scheff. There was some question about whether or not there are league members who live in Delta County. And three of us do. Kathy is from Montrose. Please join us if you can. We need more support. The hundred, the league is currently one hundred and four years old. And we are political, but we are nonpartisan. So we take positions on issues, but we do not endorse candidates. So just to let you know that we are being as nonpartisan as possible. We hope that the time you spend here today will help inform you on how to vote on November 5th. So I'm going to go through some rules of this forum. This is for the candidates have already seen this, but I'll let you know as well. This is not a debate. There will be no rebuttals from candidates or comments from the audience. And please no applause until the end. The purpose of this forum is to inform you through respectful questions and listening. We've got some campaign literature from the candidates in the back that you're most welcome to peruse and talk with the candidates afterwards. And would you all please just take your literature when you leave? Okay? The candidates will speak in alphabetical order by last name for their introductory statements. We will alternate opportunities for each candidate to speak first or last during the forum. The time limits, and Kathy is our timer, will be strictly observed. Our timekeeper will hold up cards. You want to demonstrate? There you go. Visible when thirty seconds are remaining. And when the stop card is shown, the speaker must end within ten seconds. Speakers are allowed to complete their sentences. I, as the moderator, have the responsibility to enforce the time limits. I also have responsibility to interrupt the proceedings to ensure that these ground rules are followed. I may interrupt them if I think they're strained from the subject. And please don't interrupt each other, okay? The league has prepared some questions, and we requested written questions that be submitted by yesterday. We have quite a few, and we'll get to as many as we can during this hour. The candidates will have two minutes for opening remarks, one minute for a closing statement, one and a half minutes will be allowed for responses to questions. And the candidates may choose not to respond to every question. We are live streaming and recording this forum. It will be posted on our website and available for distribution. The league requests that any recording be shown only in its entirety. So we have three candidates for two county commissioner positions. Craig Fuller from District Two, Wendell Coontz, and Nico Wolf for District Three. Candidates will be heard in alphabetical order initially, and I'll alternate questions so that each candidate has an opportunity to answer a question first and last. So we're now going to begin with Mr. Fuller.
All right. As you said, my name is Craig Fuller. I'm running for county commissioner, District Two. I live in Eckerd and have lived there for the last thirty years. My wife, Leanne, is in the back. We're coming up on our fortieth year together. We have eight kids. We raised from the ages of fourteen to thirty-five. We became licensed foster care parents in two thousand nine, and the three boys who came to us in two thousand ten eventually became permanent members of our family. Fifteen of the last thirty years, I have been on the Orchard City Board of Trustees. That assignment afforded me the chance to see some governmental workings up close and personal. We worked together on many different projects during those years. We were able to build a new town hall, the expansion of our town park to include new soccer fields and a multi-use pavilion, among other things. In other words, we've processed multiple committee assignments and annual budgets and the long-term goals of maintaining the town's water system and its roads. We have owned and operated a small residential construction business for the last thirty-plus years. Allowed our family to live here and allowed me to meet a lot of my neighbors, and many friendships have come about because of those endeavors. Why am I running for county commissioner? First of all, I loved living here. I want to do all I can to help maintain and preserve the quality of life that we all have come to enjoy. Secondly, I'm a Delta County taxpayer. I want to be sure that our tax money is being spent wisely. Third, I come with no personal agenda or preconceived ideas of my own. I understand the nine words that have set our country apart from every other the world has ever known: of the people, by the people, for the people. Government officials need to remember that they work for and to the people that voted them into office. If for some reason you don't understand that, you have no business running in the first place. Lastly, I believe the government exists to provide services that we as individuals cannot provide for ourselves. Those essential services that we all rely on. If the scope of government moves beyond those services, we need to ask the question, why is it necessary, and do the people want this? Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. Mr. Coontz.
Good morning. How many of you people, when you were kids, aspired to be a county commissioner? Me either. So let me tell you how we got here. My wife Esther and I moved to Delta County in nineteen ninety-six for my work as a mining geologist to raise our family and be engaged in our community. That path led me to the town of Hotchkiss. I served four years as a trustee, eight years as mayor, and fourteen years on the planning commission. In twenty seventeen, I was awarded the Citizen of the Year for the Hotchkiss Chamber of Commerce. I really thought my public service at that time was done. I had Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation and other organizations I was working with. But in twenty nineteen, retiring Commissioner Mark Rober and others encouraged me, counseled me, and finally convinced me to run for county commissioner. So that leads us to twenty twenty-four and this reelection campaign. You know, I'm honored and privileged to work for the citizens of Delta County, and I hope to do so again. I'm running because I believe in Delta County and all our unique interests. I'm grateful to be part of the communities we have here today, and I know Delta County to be the last best place. I believe I have a lot to offer as a commissioner. I've got so much experience, almost thirty years at the mines, being, doing budgeting and permitting and exploration. I've also spent all that time with the town of Hotchkiss, not the last four years, with Delta County. County commissioners have a lot of priorities: housing, land use codes. Mine are ag, energy development, and water. I served on the Gunnison Basin Roundtable, currently as chair. That is the epitome of the intersection between agriculture and water. In closing, I gotta, I gotta leave you with a quote, because I've been doing this for twenty years. Courtesy is as much the mark of a gentleman as courage. President Theodore Roosevelt. Thank you all for being here. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for organizing this.
My name's Nico Wolf. I'm an independent candidate for District Three County Commissioner. I'm an independent because I want to serve people, not a party. I am relatively new here. I grew up in the Air Force. I grew, I've got fifteen hometowns, so we spent a lot of our time looking for home. This is my wife Brandy and our youngest child Clara. We've got two other girls. We live outside Crawford. I have a rather varied experience. I'm a carpenter, a builder. I've been a contractor. I've been an event organizer and manager, and my current profession for the last almost decade is that of anti-corruption investigation and compliance services. I'm running for county commissioner because I want to see the people's voice more heard in the county government. I want to see more transparency and accountability. Some of my priorities are, were just that, to represent people in their voice, to have a county budget that's more in line with population growth. Over the last four years, our county budget has gone from thirty-one point five million to over sixty million, which is almost a hundred percent, while our population has grown only one point three percent. So that's a little bit skewed in my thought. A couple of other priorities I have are the issue of affordable housing for our working-class folks. And I don't mean the government-defined affordable housing as a percentage of average incomes and all that, but the actual act of being able to afford to buy your own home and not be breaking the bank and spending all your time paying for shelter. Couple other things are just taking a long-term view of the future. How can we help create an environment where our children and their children can thrive and prosper here while still retaining the rural and agricultural heritage of this place? And have economic opportunities for them, so they don't have to leave. Our biggest export has been our children, and I would like to see that not be the case anymore.
Thank you very much. So now we'll go into the question period, and I've got a number of prepared questions. We'll see how many we can get to. You've touched on some of this already, but what are your three highest priority goals for the county? And what would you say are weaknesses within the county that need to be addressed? Can we start with Mr. Coontz?
Sure. Three highest priorities for Delta County would be housing, transportation, and healthcare. And those are the three hardest, because we have a lot of mandates from state and federal governments that we were required to meet. Recently, we almost lost the Delta Hospital due to the payer mix between Medicare and private insurance. I actually got recruited to be on the Delta Health Foundation to help balance out the payments there. My three big priorities, and I touched on them, would be energy development, agriculture, and water. Actually, I've just written an op-ed with Kathy Fackler with Citizens of Climate Lobby on energy permitting reform. We have got to be able to develop energy in a reasonable, sensible manner that doesn't take twenty years to build one facility. I got thirty seconds. I'll say the other one would be on energy development would be the recent EV chargers that Delta County has installed all over the county. We've got four Level Three high-capacity chargers in four critical areas. And then we also sponsored one at the Delta Hospital for employee retention there. Those were all paid for by a fine West Delta Mine Pay that they were able to redirect towards the local county. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. Mr. Coontz.
Three highest priorities. Well, I did touch on the one, county budget. To me, it doesn't make a lot of sense that population grows so little, but the budget explodes. And at the same time, our average household income has not increased at the same rate. So I'd like to see that put back in a sense of calibrated alignment based on what we can actually afford. If state mandates are an issue for that voted budget, then perhaps we should, as a county, look at the idea of a home rule charter. It's a lot of work to do that. It's a very complicated thing, so it's a lot of responsibility on our shoulders, but it might be the way to avoid having to deal with things that come out from Denver that don't affect us. So primary one, the housing situation. I mentioned that as well. It's, I see, you know, rent for rents of two thousand bucks a month is really unsustainable for a lot of people. So what can we do as a community to develop more opportunities for folks to have accessible housing? And at the same time, accessible farmland for young folks who want to get into farming. And the third one is regulations. Simplify them and keep what is necessary, and not have regulations that we don't need or don't want enforced, but just have what we do need to pave the way into the future. And at the same time, through those, to look a long view. That's a big thing, the children's future.
Thank you, Mr. Coontz.
I would agree with the ones that have already been mentioned about, in particular to water. Water is the lifeblood of this part of the world. We all know that. So anything that we can do to ensure that our water rights remain here and that we do not allow them to go anywhere else, because without water, we might as well go somewhere else. Another one for me is the small business, because I've been in small business my whole life. I think that we need to continue to try to draw small businesses, incentivize them somehow to get them to come here. Whatever that might look like, we'll have to do some exploring there and figure out what that might look like. But, you know, we was talking about, you know, getting our kids to be able to stay here. You know, small businesses are the backbone of this country, and so if we can figure out ways to keep small businesses alive and active, then our kids will have more opportunities to stay here and be able to live, you know, where they grew up. Another one for me is this idea of mutual respect, you know, understanding each other and understanding that we are all residents of Delta County together. And so we have to be able to forge ways that we can move forward together. We're gonna have, we're gonna have issues that we don't agree on. That's a given. You know, you go inside somebody's house, you know, there are people in the house that don't agree with each other. That's just the way life is. But we got to figure out a way to move beyond that, so at the end of the day, we're moving forward together.
Thank you. All right, the next question. Delta County offers many seasonal work opportunities, particularly in agriculture, ranching, construction, and tourism. What might the county do to encourage workers to fill those positions and to obtain housing? I will start with you.
Well, the one is to support the use of ADUs, creation of ADUs for homeowners and farmers, and also to allow people who live there to use those in the off-season for short-term rentals and whatnot. There are, there are programs that exist for migrant workers. And also, in addition to that, to, if we could find the other season, the off-season jobs as well, develop another, develop that part of the economy as well. So these jobs can be folks who live here and can work all year within a county and not have to come and go. So, are we?
Can you repeat the question?
Yes.
Delta County offers many seasonal work opportunities, particularly in agriculture, ranching, construction, and tourism. What might the county do to encourage workers to fill those positions and to obtain housing?
County already provides for ADUs and additional housing in our land use code, so we encourage everybody to take advantage of that. The other thing that the county can do is work with federal government on H2B visa reform, because right now, that is so restricted and so hard to do additionally, particularly in the orchards. There's a lot, and ag, there's a lot of regulatory oversight on housing where things like you can't have carpeting in your housing unit. So to me, that's just absolutely insane. So working with our state and federal partners on that, trying to get that kind of reformation going. Retaining workers throughout the season means giving them certainly insurity of investing in Delta County, which our land use code does. We've got to be able to provide investment in Delta County that's long-lasting and long-term. And that's, that's, and encourage housing to be within the growth area of the municipalities, because that's where the services are. That's what we hope our land use code does. So there.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
As far as seasonal work goes, that's always a challenge, because we live in a place where there's four seasons, obviously. I remember when we first arrived here, my father-in-law thought we were crazy. He thought we were going to be buried in snow for, you know, four and a half to five months out of the year. It wasn't until he came here and saw the climate that we enjoy here that he actually realized that, okay, you guys are gonna be okay. You're not gonna starve to death. So construction jobs are, they're year-round. We can, we can pretty much guarantee that. You're gonna have some delays because of weather and whatnot. Ag and ranch jobs, you know, those are all, again, you know, we live across the street from an orchard, and I watched those guys go at it day after day after day. And it doesn't matter the weather. It doesn't matter the time of the year. They're able to provide housing right there on site for a lot of the guys. They come from all over the place, literally. And so, you know, those kind of jobs are available. You know, people that want to work, they're gonna find a job. If you want to survive, you're gonna find something to do. Tourism, again, is, that's a year-round occupation as well, because you've got, you know, everything from the winter activities to the summer activities and everything in between. But again, the challenge is finding the people to fill those positions and be able to retain them long-term, so they come back year after year. You know, we can offer maybe an employment for a season, but to get them to come back for the next season or to stick around for the following season that they're accustomed to. You know, those are challenges. There's nothing about it.
Thank you. I got a bit out of order, so the next question, I'm going to start with you, Mr. Fuller. Pre-written resolutions are often brought before county commissioners at their meetings without prior public discussion. They are often not found on the agenda packet, are not made available at the public meeting, nor are they properly introduced or explained to the public. So if elected, what would you do to improve transparency in the resolution development and review process?
You know, that's a very good question. That one may have to be determined as we move forward, because the government, at any level, local, you know, city, whatever, is always moving, always changing. And the twenty-four-hour notice that's required for posting in meetings and stuff sometimes is literally twenty-four hours and one minute ahead of time because of something that comes up. And so getting the word out as to what's gonna be happening at any given meeting is a challenge. And people have to take some of the initiative upon themselves to keep up with that kind of thing. You know, if they want to be involved, they want to have a voice, which I hope everybody does. There's a certain level of responsibility that falls on the citizen to get after it, to figure out what's trying to go on here, because you're right. I mean, some of those things, just because of the nature of the day, the nature of the week, they happen fast. And so you gotta be able to, it's kind of a two-way street, in other words. And I would be an advocate for, if anybody has a question, you know, we're not trying to hide anything by any stretch of the imagination, but part of that is a responsibility on the, on the individual.
Thank you. Mr. Coontz.
Craig, that's an excellent answer. I'd say ninety-nine percent of our resolutions do get posted when they're supposed to. A lot of them are very routine. They do planning and adopting dedications to roadways. We have been elected as officials to provide leadership in a lot of areas, anywhere from immigration to public safety to healthcare. So when a resolution does come up, that is last minute regarding public safety, we have to act on it, because we only meet officially every two weeks. And it's important to get these things, particularly for law enforcement and others, out in front of us. So as leaders, that's what our requirement is to. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I started a habit of reading the public agenda packets for the Board of County Commissioners meetings, and I've seen this happen a number of times where there's a resolution coming to the table that's to be voted on that day, and sometimes a very basic thing, but sometimes there are also very large things like the land use code. And that particular resolution had two very inaccurate items in it, saying we'd had two public hearings already. So I've seen this several times, and what I would say is my pledge to you is I'm gonna read every darn word that comes in front of me before I vote on it. Anything that needs to be passed, I'm gonna read it and thoroughly understand it and make sure it's, make sure it's accurate and what accurate to its appropriate intent. For things, as Mr. Coontz just mentioned, of important emergency things, we can still read that and make sure that they are in line with what we need to do right then. So for me, it's just a matter of really reading and understanding, making sure the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
Thank you. Mr. Coontz will start with you. What differences do you see between the three districts in Delta County, and how do you work with them?
I would say our differences are very minor. I think we have a heck of a lot more that unites us than divides us. And I don't want to go into, you know, Cedar Edge Bruins are better than the North Fork Miners, because they're not. But that's what I focus on. What unites us? What brings us together? What keeps us going together? Because I'm very optimistic about Delta County, and I believe in it. So I don't see the differences as being that critical.
Well, I see the three districts are, I mean, they're assigned based on population, but they are very different, actually, topographically and culturally. And especially in our availability of water, because out in District Three, water is a more precious resource and it's harder to get than in District One, where we've got some big rivers flowing through. So there's that in terms of planning to really know where they are. And quite frankly, I think our election process should be adjusted to, so the residents of each district vote for their commissioner directly, rather than the ad lark system we have right now, so they have a little more direct representation. And then our commissioners can focus more on their own district instead of the county as a whole, and then work with the other commissioners for the projects and problems that do impact us, impact us all.
Thank you. Mr. Fuller.
I guess I would kind of lean toward what Wendell was indicating, that, you know, the districts are divided up by regions, by populations. And there are some differences. We all know that. But again, let's focus on the things that we have in common with each other. Let's work together. So let's pick one. Let's say road and bridge departments. So the road and bridge departments are notorious for working together. If you've got a big project, you know, look at some of the stuff we've done in the last couple of years. A big road, yeah, big north road was a huge one. I mean, all the districts had to work together, and so you pool your resources from the different districts to get whatever the project that had hand done that needs to get done. And so I would like to continue to see that happen, and I'm just, like I said, I'm picking on roads here, but there's other examples for sure that we can come up with. We just have to make sure that we're all, again, we're working together towards a common goal. We're not fragmented or, you know, here's what I'm gonna do, what are you gonna do? What are we gonna do?
Speaking of roads, people often complain about roads, traffic, potholes, et cetera. What do you think about the current state of maintenance of our county roads? I'll start with you.
Well, I've actually been receiving phone calls already about this very topic. And there's two roads in particular. They go from the highways to the national forest. They get a lot more traffic than intended. And from what I understood from our conversations is that it's not a matter of, it's more of a policy that they don't get attended to enough as they should. So I think we should analyze the needs of them, and these particular roads just increase their maintenance ability. But what I understand, like Rogers Mesa Road, the highway through there, that's not the worst part, and that's finally gonna get fixed, from what I understand. And also, maybe some of the construction part of the roads, we can start bidding out to private bidders. I think it'd be really interesting to see our road and bridge crew, who are awesome. I'm gonna say, I see these guys show up on the spot when there's a problem. They're amazing guys, but it'd be interesting for the construction aspect, if they were to actually participate in a competitive bid with a private contractor and see if we get a more effective and efficient operation.
Mr. Coontz.
Road?
Maya. I'm sorry. Yes, uh, no, I think. Mr. Yes.
Okay. Our road and bridge department has a five-year maintenance plan, capital plan. And we go through it every year at budget time, reevaluate priorities, look at the different roads. Inflation and the price of oil or asphalt has almost tripped in the last several years, just like everything else. So we've got to budget that in very accordingly. Additionally, the county has to replace capital equipment, whether it's a roller, a dozer, whatever it is. We have to do that on a regular schedule. Transportation and roads are probably one of the biggest calls I get all the time. We've got to remember that if you move on at the end of the gravel road or a dirt road, that's what you got. We will maintain it as often as possible, but we can't do everything and be everywhere. I am so proud of the guys that do road and bridge work. They are up early in the mornings, plowing snow, working ten, twelve-hour days. So yes, our roads need work, but they're just like everything else, so does our landfills.
Mr. Fuller, I do get you confused again.
The note that I wrote to myself when these guys were talking was, it's pretty simple. It says, roads equals money. So our experience, my experience with the town of Orchard City was, you know, we got a lot of phone calls about, hey, my road needs a fix, my road needs this, whatever it happened to be. In the wintertime, it was, how come my road didn't get plowed and Joe's road did? And Orchard City is kind of spread out, so we got this elevation thing going on where you get, you know, maybe a dust and a snow down here. And by the time you get to the north boundary of Orchard City, you know, we had inches of snow. Plow the snow would tell you. It makes sense to plow a couple inches. It does not make sense to plow a skip, because it tears the road up. But like Wendell said, you think groceries are expensive. Try going out and buying asphalt to redo a road right now. It's just absolutely mind-boggling. And so when you've got a pie that's this big and you're trying to piece off, you know, what we're gonna be able to accomplish in any given year, and you've got your five-year program that you're working off of, you gotta make sure that you're not, you know, you're prioritizing things, and you're not just throwing money out because somebody calls up and says, I got a problem here. And to explain to them, you know, here's what we're working on. Here's our plan. We actually have something that we're working off of. It's not just willy-nilly, because that was the phone call that we used to get. It was like, it just seemed like it just, that pothole, and then it's, you know, five miles over here, it's this pothole. Why don't you just do an entire road while you're there? Well, it's the pie problem. The pie just ain't big enough for what we're trying to do sometimes.
Thank you. Mr. Coontz will start with you. Water is the subject. What role do you propose Delta County plays in conservation efforts and drought mitigation?
Delta County actually manages no water. That is not our role. But with my work on the Gunnison Basin Roundtable, Colorado River District, and others, we have a very big role to play in conserving and utilizing. But with my work on the Gunnison Basin Roundtable, uh Colorado River District and others, we have a very big role to play in conserving and utilizing. Agriculture water, irrigation water. The Basin Roundtable has focused. So heavily on repairing aging infrastructure, all the all these projects you see out there from piping ditches to. Fruit growers' reservoir outlet repair, farmer's ditch headgate repair. A lot of that comes through the Basin Roundtable, and we have worked diligently to make sure those funds are available. Delta County needs to support those efforts, and they Delta County needs to support those uh people who own water rights and are continually trying to use them. So that's the big role we have here.
Mr. Fuller.
So when I think of uh water conservation, I think of watershed development, and so as Mr. Cruz just mentioned, it's not the government's role to um. Dictate what happens with the water, but I think we can encourage those who have live water flowing through uh to to do what they can there to develop. Their watershed that flows through their property and and beyond, uh the more water that's in the ground, the more we mitigate drought conditions. Uh, the more trees are around, the more evapotranseration we have, the more water can keep around, it's kind of a funny thing, like the water, the trees drink the water, but they also keep water around. Um, I think getting some beavers back up in the the higher reaches of the watershed will help keep water around, so. Yes, using it wisely is one thing, but the more we can do to cultivate the actual water in the ground, in the watershed, more will flow out. And when more more folks downstream are wanting our water, I think we do need to see like, what can we do? What can individuals do on their own property, how can we keep water here uh one by one? So rather than the government fixing everything, what can we fix on our own property?
Mr. Fuller.
Well, as as I said earlier, water is is huge here in this part of the world, and we. Conservation efforts, you know, on a county-wide level, because we're not a supplier of any kind of drinking water. That one's kind of falls on the on the people that are providing drinking water. And there's various ways that you can do that, in Orchard City, they actually had a moratorium for several summers in the last ten years where they just nixed all outdoor watering to try to save water. But a better picture of water is that, you know, we have to do all we can to to maintain the waters that we have and to make sure that the water rights stay here. And as we move forward, you know, there's gonna be ongoing problems with people trying to move water from one part and stay to the next. And so we have to do all we can as a as a as a body of of commissioners to try to maintain what we have here and to not let that happen. Keep a close watch on water, because our ag people, their livelihoods depend on water, we cannot allow that water to go anywhere else, we've got to keep it here. And just the common sense household stuff that Mr. Wolf was alluding to in some of his comments, um just keeping. An eye on what you're doing with your water, we live in a desert, we're on the edge of the high desert here, so we have to maintain that kind of mentality, we have to do. As individuals, all we can to minimize the use of our water.
Thank you. We'll start with you on the next one. Delta County's master plan places emphasis on the county's agricultural history, but also calls for diversification in its strategy. Considering the local economic situation and the recently approved land use code, do you think the county has a clear economic strategy? Or needs one at all, or needs a different or a better one?
I think it could definitely be improved. Um, one thing, well, there's two things that are missing from the land use code, uh but one is. In the zoning process, we didn't really develop enough industrial areas to attract that sort of industry. Um, another thing I think about often though is how can we take agriculture and take the products from that agriculture and create industry from that? And one thing in particular I do like to think about, I'm kind of strained from that, but do we have a clear vision? Um, I think we do need to clarify that vision, uh but the. The the piece that comes together in my mind is something that people don't always understand, uh but it was a staple crop of our country until nineteen thirty-seven, and that's industrial hemp. We recently had industrial hemp come through, but that was just, it was uh focused on the flowers, on the CBD medicine, whereas we totally avoided um the fiber. The building materials, the food, the feedstock we can all get from that, we can create fuel from that, and I think industrial hemp in the in that sense. Could create the basis of a local industry, so we could tie the two together, both uh keeping our agricultural nature and developing um a new industry right here. So that's one item, and then and then another is to, what can we do to attract smaller um smaller industry, and then also going back to the kids. Let's develop some trade schools here and apprenticeship programs where our kids can learn skills that they can use right away and keep them around. So I think we, again, put our 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 futures in our children, and we can train them here, and you're back to people.
Mr. Fuller.
You wrote that question real simply again.
Delta County's master plan places emphasis on the county's agricultural history, but also calls for diversification in its strategy. Considering the local economic situation and the recently approved land use code, do you think the county has a clear economic strategy? Needs one at all, or needs a different or better one?
You know, that's a another very good question, there's a lot there, uh more than ninety seconds will allow us to do for sure. Um, I I agree with Mr. Wolf in the fact that that the trades are important, you know, trades are disappearing in this country, so if we can diversify. Our our learning processes and and to let kids know that there's options out there, and that will feed into what I said earlier also about small businesses. Um, I have a son who just recently graduated from the technical college down here in in Delta. Um, fantastic program, you know, he invested two years and be honest with you, there was times where we were. I sure hope he gets it done, because uh it's it's a long road if you don't. And by gum, he got it done, and so, you know, that was that was an eye-opener for me, because there's a lot, there's a lot offered down there that I don't think people really realize, so that's definitely a good a good step. Um, but again, you know, as far as what what role the county can play in all this versus the private sector and how much is driven by which. That's a balancing act in my in my opinion, because, you know, when the when government starts telling you what's gonna happen, that's a problem in my mind, because. Free enterprise will dictate and drive a lot of that growth by itself, as long as we're as we're diligent and we're we're pursuing those things. Getting kids options to get educated and and train them in things. And so I think the next generation has some opportunities, they just have to grab a hold of it.
Thank you. Diversification of agriculture means a lot of things, and our land use code very intentionally stepped back to allow. Agriculture, whether it's organic ag, evolving ag, or traditional agricultural planters flourish. We give them the certainty that their investments will still be there uh in years to come. Having an economic strategy uh from the county, we've got actually two things going, uh Delta County does support the Technical College of the Rockies. Where trade programs are ongoing, and they're continuing to build on that, they've got CAD, uh EMS, instruction. Cosmetology and others out there. Uh, the other thing Delta County is in is investing in is our economic development team, One Delta, uh they're bringing small uh businesses to Delta County. Uh, we've had several move in here, one of which was a. Toy train miniature production company that built trees and little hills. And they actually use them in Hollywood productions as miniatures, so. So the county is actually doing something here, and but we got to stay out of the way of those who have new ideas and new processes. And not unburden them with regulations that give them certainty. Thank you.
Mr. Fuller will ask you this next one. The county's budget has almost doubled in the last eight years, increasing roughly thirty to sixty million dollars. Taxpayers have little insight into the expenditures, especially when it comes to projects. Do you feel there's a need for more budget transparency, and what would you propose if so?
Oh, I'd say that's a no-brainer, any kind of transparency in government is a good thing, and especially when it comes to tax money, because all that money is uh is coming from somewhere else. The county is not generating its own money, and so we have to be really mindful of the people and making sure that they're aware that the money is being spent widely, so. Um, as far as uh the the increase in the budget, I mean, that's just kind of the nature of the beast, and we just. A lot of these things are out of our control, they just they just escalate. You look at the the taxes that we pay, and uh that the question that has been asked in the past, and we've answered it, um. Do you think taxes are too high, too low, or about right, and you know, it depends on what time of the year you want to ask me that question, you want to ask me that question in April, well, the taxes are due, they're too high. You talk to that same question in September, when the roads are getting fixed and other things are getting taken care of. The answer is they're just about right, because there's so many places in the world that the taxes are astronomically higher than they are here. And so we're we're very fortunate to live here and be able to uh have our taxes structured the way it is. But as far as transparency goes, absolutely, I mean, there's there's nothing to hide here. And anybody that has any questions about how money is being spent ought to be able to get a straightforward decent answer forthcoming, there shouldn't there shouldn't be any kind of uh smoke and mirrors here.
Thank you, Mr. Coons.
A lot of the increase in the county budget has come from the unfunded mandates out of Denver. Our human services department has had to increase uh positions there, public safety's had to increase positions there. Our judicial, uh our judges and clerks and and court safety have all had to increase positions there. Because of the mandates, the statutes coming out of Denver, we don't like it any more than anybody else. We certainly don't have the. Additionally, our capital budget has had to increase because the state forced us, one, to remodel the courthouse. Second, to build a new um human services building, because we didn't have any place to put these new people that the state required us to have. And third, we've got ARPA funds now, we've rebuilt the courthouse, remodeled, rerun, remodeled the sheriff's office, we're currently remodeling the jail. We had to build a new human services department. Additionally, our budget is on the website, and it's very easy to read. If you have any questions, get ahold of us, but we are being as transparent and open as we can with this. One thing we can't post out there is individual salaries, that's against that's against the law. So we are committed to being open, transparent, and doing the best with the taxpayer money we have. To let you know, the Delta County decreased the property mills, two point zero two mills to nine point two one seven this year, just because of that.
So regarding uh budget transparency, yes, the current budget is accessible on the county website. Now, to obtain the previous four years, I had to email the county administrator directly, and she did send me the last four years of budgets. Um, each one is a slightly different format, so it's not necessarily a consistent way to compare year after year. It would be nice to see all of the budgets on the website, click a button, go to the accounting page, the budget, here you go, right here, everything's right there, and if we have to. Deal with unfunded mandates, I would like to see those explicitly described on the website, what are we having to pay for that we didn't ask for? And how much is that costing us, how much has that added to our budget? And then at the same time, those unfunded mandates are one of the primary reasons I'm interested in a home rule charter. Can we do it? Again, a home rule charter worked for us, uh we could get away from some of those unfunded mandates, but um I would like to see what these are um and have. Have that be explained more clearly, because right now it's it's not uh readily available.
Mr. Fuller, we'll start with you. Um, open burning is another issue people get exercised about. Watching smoke rising in the springtime can be disconcerting, especially to newcomers. What are your thoughts about open burning and fire mitigation?
Well, open burning is part of the ag world that we live in, I mean, there's really no getting around that one. As far as getting people to abide by burn bans and things like that. You know, you you hate to see a fire get out of control, because, you know, we've all lived it, right, we've all seen it. Uh, gosh, I'm gonna burn this morning because it's, you know, ten thirty and there's no breeze, even though the forecast is calling for, you know. Red flag conditions by one, I'll have it out by then, well, that doesn't always work, very rarely works actually, so. Um, I think that's just a a permanent part of where we're at, because, you know, the the guys gotta get their dishes clean, they gotta get the property. Ready to go for for farming, and so burning has been a historical way of getting land ready to go. Getting water to be able to flow through the ditches that are choked with weeds and stuff, so um I think that's the here to stay.
Mr. Coons.
I think Craig hit that right on the head. Ag burning has been the tradition here for decades and generations, I don't see that discontinuing. Additionally, Delta County has been working very diligently with Forest Service, BLM, and others on. Being burn prevention, particularly on the south side of Grand Mesa, we had a fire, the Current Creek Fire this year, had not the county crews jumped in there, dozed the fire line. That thing would have jumped the ridge, that fire would have jumped the ridge, there was nothing stopping it until they got to the wake uh wake fire burn. So fire is part of the landscape, we got to work with it and be smart about it. And work with our federal partners and making sure that they do their work there too, and encourage them.
Well, um, for those who are disconcerted about open burning, well, welcome to the country, you know, it's what we do here, it's kind of like a marker of spring, so. Um, it's, you know, it's a great way to kill off the weeds and the weed seeds and and get your your water flowing, as they've said. Um, really, it's just a matter of being responsible, you know, there's times when you can do it safely, and there's times when you can't, so we need to pay attention to that, and the the folks who are doing it. You know, if it's beyond, if you've got problems beyond the ditch, well, then there's mitigation to be be had there, but uh yeah, it's part of life here, and. All we can do is be responsible while we're doing it, and not have to trust that the fire department's gonna come and put it out when it gets out of our hands.
Thank you. To keep to our time, I'm going to ask one more question. Uh, Mr. Coons, we'll start with you. What would you want to see Delta County be like in ten years? And how does master planning fit into your vision?
I'll pick up the second question first. Our last uh master plan update was in twenty eighteen, about every ten years, it's good to update these. So by twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, Delta County needs to be planning for a nice uh master plan update. And find out where everybody's at, because that's our job. Where I'd like to see Delta County in ten years is to be a bit more cohesive, be a bit more civil with with each other, be more respectful. Because the current political environment, it gets it gets pretty rough, and that's not who Delta County is, that's not who I want Delta County to be. Very proud to be here, uh very proud of the work I'm doing here, and I appreciate you guys' support, but civility, respect. And working together is is critical to getting there. Thank you.
Mr. Fuller.
Uh, question, please.
What would you want to see Delta County be like in ten years, and how does master planning fit into your vision?
So primarily, not too much different, um aside from uh local economic growth, a more development of our local economy from the ground up. Uh, encouraging small businesses, and again, back to the kids, and how can we train our children, what kind of skills can we give them to be moving forward? And in terms of master planning, uh yes, I agree that the master plan, which was a great community effort, uh is about time for that to be revisited. And I would like to see, I would like to see us to get together and really put a long-term view on it, what can we, can we look a hundred years down the road? Are we able to see what we want this place to be like for our great-great-grandchildren? I think we really need to do that, in the state of the world, everything's changing so fast outside of here, but here in Delta County, this is a very special and unique place. And I think we have the opportunity to chart our own course in the future and not not be uh beholden by everything else that's happening out there, so. Can we get together and really, really put a long-term view out there, but primarily, I want it to be. I want to see this place retain the culture it has, the rural nature of it, the agricultural culture we have, and to build on that. What kind of small industries can we build? How can we maintain what we have into the future without being totally transformed? Um, as a good friend said recently, you have to plan for growth, otherwise the growth will pass us. And we don't want to be a victim of the growth, but we want to really look forward into the future and see where we're gonna go.
Mr. Fuller.
Yeah, um, as I said in my opening comments, you know, I love living here, I always have, um, I wanted to try to maintain what we have, preserve what we have. I understand change is inevitable, but change for the sake of change is not. And so we have to be very careful when we try to to plan, that we're not planning out something that we need to keep in. And so, you know, I look at the the county population, it's changed appreciatively in the thirty years that I've been here. It's had its ups and downs, but it's pretty, it's we're maintaining a fairly even keel. And so to just flatly say, we're gonna start changing things, you have to ask yourself the question, what are we gonna change, and why are we changing it? What's wrong with what we have now? And so those kinds of questions have to be part of your of your planning stages, and that requires a lot of input from from everybody. To make sure that we're not heading in a direction that nobody wants to go, just because the buzzword of the day is change, we got to, we got to change something, because that's just what people do. And so that's that's not where I'm at, so.
Thank you. Okay, it's time for closing statements and we'll start.
Well, thank you everybody for coming. Thank you, Janine and your crew for putting this together. I come from a genuine desire to serve the people of this county and this beautiful land we all call home. And we all come from different places and have different perspectives on things, but we share this one thing in common is that we love the ground that we stand on, that we live upon, that is our livelihood. And I'm here offering humbly to serve you. I'm not a politician. I have no intention of being a career politician. I'm here from that place of offering to be of service for everybody here who wants to, who loves this place. So that's about all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Fuller.
Yeah, I guess just to kind of put it all out there for, for anybody that might have a question as to what's going on in this thing between my ears. If you're here this morning and you're wondering what a vote cast in my direction would look like, I can offer you a couple of guarantees. Number one, I am personally a believer, so every day I tend to look at this world, both near and far, through the lens of God's word. If something doesn't line up with what I read there, that's an immediate red flag for me. Secondly, I believe God has given each and every person unique gifts, talents and abilities. A couple of things He's given me are, as my grandmother used to say, not so common anymore. One of them is this thing called common sense. If it sounds too good to be true, it probably is. If it stinks, it probably ought to be steered clear of. Anything is called, another thing is called a voice of reason. At the end of the day, after considering all angles of a particular topic, we have to find a way to move, move forward together. I'll do my best to listen and take your input and suggestions under serious consideration. Lastly, I will make mistakes. I guarantee it. I ask that you extend grace and forgiveness and I pledge to offer it back to you as well.
Thank you. Mr. Coons.
Well said, Craig. Because I like quotes, I'm going to start with a quote instead of ending this. Perpetual optimism is a force multiplier. General Colin Powell. I'm as optimistic as I can be about Delta County and where we're headed and our citizens. Because I believe in Delta County and I want to make this my permanent home. Actually, Esther and I have plots up in Riverside Cemetery, so we'll be here a while. A fun fact about General Powell, he also started his career with a degree in geology from NYU. There's nothing magical about being a commissioner. None of the hollow rhetoric that we hear can replace the hard work, the long hours, because this is a leadership position. We've got to have patience and respect for each other. We've got to have authenticity. We've got to have that relative life, work experience that will put our issues in context when we have to face and make decisions on them. So I appreciate the opportunity to be with you guys this morning. And I appreciate your support. I really would. And I want to thank the League of Women Voters and all of you for being here today.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates, for your participation and thank you, audience, for your interest in being more informed. We encourage you to learn more about the candidates and the issues that will be on the ballot. We've got some stickers for our vote411.org website put on by the league. It's a nationwide thing. All you have to do is put in your address and it will give you your sample ballot. It also has information about the candidates and about the 14 state ballot issues that will be, yeah, 14 of them. We're presenting information on those 14 issues in a number of ways. We've got an online piece that you can watch. It's 43 minutes long, which is very short considering all the issues. Check with our website, which is very simple. One of these days I'm going to get cards. L W V hyphen U V, that's for you, uncompraved valley.org. We're also on Facebook, Instagram and X. We really want you to remember that this is a mailing ballot. That a ballot will be mailed starting the week of October 14th. So we're trying to get a lot of information out before then because we know how anxious you are to fill out your ballots. You can fill out ballots and get them turned in up until 7:00 PM November 5th. If you're going to mail them, mail about eight days in advance just to be safe. The League of Women Voters' mission is to empower voters and defend democracy. And remember, you are the one that makes democracy work and thank you very much.